Hello everyone and welcome to our special series about the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. This series is designed to help inform residents about issues that are important to the town. Each segment is about a specific article or group of articles, so make sure you check in to find the issue that's important to you or to learn about all of the issues our town is facing. Hello Carlisle, I'm Brian Waterston. I'm here with Wayne Davis.
Hello.
And we're here to talk a little bit about town meeting. Before we do so, just a little bit about me. I've been a resident of Carlisle for just about nine years at this point. I do serve on the Carlisle School Committee, the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee, as well as the Town Meeting Study Committee, which has been meeting for about a year or a little bit more at this point. And just as a reminder, Carlisle's Annual Town Meeting is coming up on Sunday, May 18th at 1:00 P.M. at the school auditorium. And Wayne, I've got a few questions for you, but before I do, do you want to just introduce yourself a bit further?
Sure, I'm Wayne Davis. I'm the town moderator. Talk about what exactly that means a little bit later, but I've been living in town since 1993 and have been moderator for 16 years, give or take.
Wonderful. So let's start with some town meeting basics. Suppose someone has recently moved to town. Maybe they were in Boston or Cambridge before or a different part of the country. They might not be familiar with what town meeting is. I mean, I've shared even growing up in Rhode Island, I never heard of the concept of town meeting. So how would you explain it to somebody new to town?
I know this question well because I felt that way when I moved here in 1993. I had grown up in Pennsylvania, lived in Cambridge and Somerville for nine or 10 years. And what is this town meeting thing? So I think we're probably all familiar. Most of the government in the United States, you think about our three branches of government: judicial, executive, and legislative. And in municipal government in Massachusetts, in towns, the town meeting is the legislative branch. So if you come to town meeting and you vote, you're actually acting as your own legislator.
Alright, and how often does Carlisle hold a town meeting and how long does it take?
So Carlisle, like the other towns in Massachusetts, and we do have, we have cities which are larger and then towns. Cities have like a city, typically we'll have a city council, that's what you see in Cambridge or in Boston. But in, in the towns, you have town meeting and that must meet annually. And that's typically in the fourth fiscal quarter of the year. So most towns, they start in late March. Most of the town meetings are in April and May. Some happen in June. Typically in Carlisle, we meet early to mid-June. And we have to do that at that time of year because July 1 starts the new fiscal year and the state requires that we've adopted a budget. So that is the annual town meeting. That happens every spring and we try like the dickens to make sure that we get it done in one day. Sometimes if we have a lot of business, it will go over into two, two days. Or God forbid, we should go to three days like our friends in Concord seem to do all the time. We try to do it a lot faster than that. And then if there's additional special business, typically around land use regulations and other items that don't need to be done on that fiscal year basis, those may get done in what's called a special town meeting, which typically occurs in the fall. And this year, the select board has a range of items that couldn't get on the warrant, as we call it for this spring town meeting. So there will be a special town meeting probably in November this year.
Wonderful. So you said a little while ago that this is really the legislative branch of the town. And for most of us, we're used to representative democracy, where we're voting for our senators and our representatives to essentially represent us in whether it's up at Beacon Hill or in DC. This seems to be more like direct democracy. How did this form of government come about?
Yeah, that's a great question. This really is direct democracy. And the history on this is sometimes a little bit vague and sometimes there's a little bit of mythology as there is with most of American history. I'm sorry if the administration gets upset with me saying that. But there are really two, sort of two streams. One is that you had the early settlers to what would become the United States coming over from England. And of course, many of them were actually fairly religiously motivated. And so some of them brought these traditions of that the church would meet annually to take care of frankly, business matters. The non-religious matters needed to actually run a church. And so in each town, you had the meeting house. And the meeting house, the civic life and the religious life were fused in the, you know, in prior to the American Revolution, 1776. So we're talking the 1600s and so forth. There is another stream of influence that isn't nearly as well documented, but there seems to be some pretty good evidence that in fact, the New England town meeting, and it was primarily in New England, was also influenced very much by the Native Americans, who had traditions of people in the tribes coming together and deciding things collectively. And there's some evidence that there was a lot of influence of people seeing how the Native Americans were managing their own affairs and that strongly influenced them about their own ideas of self-government.
Interesting. So why do you think we do not see this any place else really outside of New England?
I really don't know. Yeah, I grew up in Pennsylvania and you know, you had, you know, townships and boroughs and cities. And it was elected and that's what you see in the, in the rest of the country. But it's a real privilege that we have here. And you know, certainly if you read DeTocqueville and some of the other, you know, 19th century observers of the American scene, a lot of what they call the democratic impulse really came from these New England traditions of self-government.
Very interesting. Can you talk a little bit about what your job is as moderator?
Sure. Well, basically moderator, I, I run the show. But it's not like the sort of power that you might see, you know, in the United States. House of Representatives, the Speaker of the House. I don't nearly have that power. As a matter of fact, I have zero power over policy. My job as moderator is really to actually moderate or run the proceedings. So total control over procedure, zero control over, over policy. So the way I view my job is I'm there to help the town make decisions that are wise, fair, and efficient. And what I mean, and I mean it in that order. So wise, I want to help run the discussions in such a way that the town, when it comes time to vote, makes what the town considers a good decision. Democracy is great. It also has the capacity to make dumb decisions. As a matter of fact, most elections in this country, at least 40% of the people think that democracy has made a dumb decision. Well, at town meeting, we, we hope that we actually come up with, with decisions that make sense both in the short term and the long term for the, for the town. And we're coming together as a legislature, we're really supposed to deliberate and figure out what is the right answer. Not everyone comes in with a set opinion and just shove it down other people's throat. So that's number one, help the town make good decisions. Second is that I want the process to be fair. So that everyone who wants to speak gets the opportunity, that all the different views are aired and that no one feels like the process was manipulated in any way such that the way we got there was unfair. And finally, and really third priority is efficient. We'd like the process to be one where people feel like, okay, I'm here, I'm giving my time to the town, but please don't waste my time. So I don't want to waste people's time. At the same time though, it's supposed to be a deliberation. People are supposed to talk and listen to each other. And so it's, it just can't be done in 30 seconds. There needs to be a certain amount of time spent. I just hope that we spend it wisely and not inefficiently.
So with all those things in mind, how do you measure success? What's a good town meeting to you?
Well, first of all, that we get it done in one session.
I think we'd all agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's really most important. Second, I hope I don't make too many mistakes. And the mistakes I make, I'm nearly one, and maybe town council are aware of them and, and the clerk, that I don't make any, any mistakes. And I, I do make mistakes all the time, but hopefully they're really small and not ones to, you know, upset people. But really, most of all, it is what I said. If, if the town, if people feel like they've made good decisions and that we've got it done reasonably efficiently. That doesn't necessarily mean that everything should be unanimous vote or even near unanimous. The most important thing actually are the votes that are really close. You know, maybe a two-thirds vote that only passed by five or 10 votes or maybe it failed by, by a couple. I'd like people to feel like, okay, we had a good discussion. We came in and that, you know, however we got there, some winners, some losers, but at least the town had a thorough airing of the issue and we made a good decision.
Fantastic. So as I mentioned at the start, our next town meeting is coming up on Sunday, May 18th. What can we expect with this town meeting?
So this one is going to be different. So there's a, a little bit of experimentation going on, which you and I have been working on with the Town Meeting Study Committee. First is traditionally Carlisle has done evening town meetings. Typically, you know, starting on a, on a Monday evening. We actually had a little bit of fun during the pandemic. We had to meet outside, so we met on a Sunday afternoon out on the plaza, broiling sun. We're not going to do that, that again. But still, we're going to do it on a Sunday afternoon. The, the idea is make it a little bit more of a social occasion, which, you know, it used to be in the past and it still is in a lot of towns. So the town meeting will start at 1:00, but there's going to be a food truck out there from 11:30 or so. There'll be a number of organizations with tables out on the plaza with, you know, sharing information. There'll be a poster session where there'll be information about the different warrant articles that people can browse before the meeting. Then also, you know, just a good time to hang out and, and visit with friends before the meeting actually starts at 1:00.
Perfect. And I think it's also worth mentioning childcare as well.
Childcare, absolutely, yes.
I know in my house, it's always hard to, on a Monday at 7:00 P.M. when the kids are heading to bed to, to figure out that trade-off. So hoping childcare will help people as well.
Yes, we're, we're hoping that, so, so actually, and you know more of the details probably, probably you should share exactly what the childcare arrangements are, if you have them.
So still being finalized, but we will have options at least for kindergarten up at school. I actually have a meeting about it tomorrow to finalize. And by the time this comes out, I imagine the details will be socialized more broadly.
Right. And, and we're also hoping, I mean, we realize that, you know, like for older kids, maybe middle school or something like that. Sometimes it's, it's hard in, in the evening, you know, exactly, okay, what are we going to do with the kids? Need to supervise homework, that, that sort of thing. This being the weekend, we're hoping, okay, maybe the idea is, okay, so if the older kids, they go, go over to a friend's house and play and maybe, you know, one, one parent oversees a bunch of kids and the other parents then are free to show up at town meeting and participate.
Yeah, exactly. So hopefully people are listening to this who maybe haven't gone before and thinking they'll want to check out town meeting. What do they need to do to be able to attend and participate?
Well, to attend and participate, you just need to be a registered voter. So if you haven't yet registered, please stop in at the town clerk's office and register, that's first. And then at a minimum, all you need to do is show up on the day of town meeting. And you, you know, you check in, it's similar to checking in to vote. You identify, you know, yourself and, and then you just walk into the auditorium and participate in proceedings. You can speak to any of the articles or not, or you know, you're just there to, to vote. That's the, the minimum. Now, if you want to educate yourself about the issues, which ideally, you know, democracy, we'd like to have educated voters, informed voters. There are lots of outlets. Probably the first and easiest one, because it arrives in your mailbox every Friday, is Reading the Mosquito. We are immensely privileged here in Carlisle to have a high-quality local newspaper. The Mosquito covers, they publish the entire warrant. They do summaries on every article, so you can, you can see what's going on there. People just received in their mailboxes at the end of last week, a postcard with information. There's a, you can download the warrant. The warrant is basically the agenda. It says what's the business we're going to be covered. So you can get a copy of that, you can download it from the town website. There's also, we have these podcasts and the town is publishing on the town meeting website page, further information about each of the particular articles. Not all the information is up as we're sitting here on April 14th or whatever day we are, but in the, in the, the days and weeks ahead, all of that information will be filled out. And so if there is an issue, again, we call them warrant articles. If there is an article that particularly has your interest, you want to find out more about it, you can dive deep by going to the town meeting page on the town meeting website.
Perfect. Yep, and I was there over the weekend and starting to see information populated already. Can you talk a little bit more about how the meeting is run? Is it Robert's Rules of Order? Do people need to know how the rules work before they attend?
So you don't really need to know much. There are a few things you do need to know. And it's not Robert's Rules of Order. We actually, there is a, a specific parliamentary handbook published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. It's called Town Meeting Time. And the fourth edition of that was just published a couple of months ago. And by our town meeting bylaw that we have here in Carlisle, that is the official rule book that, that we use. It's similar to Robert's Rules for the most part, but there are a few things that are really specialized as to how you run town, town meeting. So that's what we use here in, in Carlisle. And if people want to, you know, if you really want to geek out on it, which some people do, you can always go to the library and get a copy. Or you can, you know, if you really want to do it, you can, you can purchase it online, either hard copy or electronic copies. But for the most part, all you need to know is that if you want to speak, I will give people the opportunity to speak. You just follow the proceedings, I'll say the floor is open for debate. People come up to the microphone. The time limit for speakers, we used to have three minutes. It's now, we've decided to experiment with cutting it down a little bit to two minutes. So you do want to think about what you want to say so that you can get it out very concisely and speak. Generally, we only want people to speak once, but you know, so that everyone gets a chance to speak. But if everyone's had a chance to speak already and there's something important that you want to bring up, again, then, you know, I will recognize people for a second time.
That's once per article?
That, yes, yeah, per article, yeah. And as is true in Carlisle and true in, in every town, there are people who tend to speak a lot frequently, people who, who never speak, you know, but it's, it's up to you. The other thing that's important for people to know is it is possible to propose amendments to most articles. So if there's, you know, if, if there's something that, you know, mainly you like, but there's one piece that you think is really wrong, it's possible to propose an amendment. And the rules on that are fairly simple. If it's just changing a word or two, then I will take it orally. But in general, we like to have it in writing, particularly if it's long and complicated. The other thing is that I do ask, if you're going to be going into the meeting knowing that you want to propose an amendment, get in touch with me in advance for a couple of reasons. One, it just helps you and me to know that you're, you're going to stand up and propose an amendment. Second is that I can and do help people with the wording. It's not my job to, to help you pass or, or, or help you defeat something, but it, but I'm trying to make sure that the procedure doesn't get in the way so that the town can have a clear up and down vote on the merits of whatever it is that you want to propose. So I can help people with, with wording. And sometimes depending on the article, there may be some specialized procedural rule. Most people probably aren't going to know about it, but if you call me in advance, I might be able to say, oh, you know, you need to be aware of X and we can make sure. Again, my idea is that there's a clean up and down vote on the merits and nobody gets tripped up by procedure.
Perfect. What happens if someone wants to vote on an article, but they can't attend town meeting? And are there ways they can also attend via Zoom?
You, you, yes, you can attend virtually, but what you can't do is vote. So then let, let, let me explain that. So if you're not able physically to be there, then our local cable, Minuteman Media, if you've, if you've got your, your cable hooked up, it's, I believe, channel eight or channel nine. I forget which one it is, but you can follow the proceedings there. Also, there's a live stream so that if you're outside of Carlisle and you want to watch on your laptop or other mobile device, you can certainly catch, catch the live stream. And so you can at least watch it that way. In terms of remote voting, that's not currently allowed under Massachusetts statutes. There is some progress towards that, where there's, there's another form of town meeting that we use in Massachusetts that's available for larger towns, it's called representative town meeting. So they're typically, they have, you have precincts or neighborhoods and people elect representatives. So say between, the smallest one is maybe 70 and the largest is 240 in Massachusetts. Elected representatives, there, since they know exactly who the people are, they are allowed under Massachusetts law to have a remote or a hybrid meeting where people can vote. But we have what's open town meeting, so we have something like 4,100 registered voters. So anyone can show up, but you have to show up.
Yeah. Sort of along those lines, since joining the Town Meeting Study Committee, I've had people ask me, why do we have to vote at town meeting? Why can't we just vote on these things as part of the town election that also happens in the spring? Can you talk a little bit about that as well?
Sure. So there's, you're sort of the simple explanation, then the, the more elaborate or perhaps philosophical. Well, the, the, the simple explanation is that's what the state law says. But you really want to know why, why is that? And if you go back to what we talked about at the beginning, this is a legislature. So the whole point is that you're supposed to come together and deliberate. So typically, what I find over the, you know, 16 years I've been moderator and years before that, when just attending town meeting as a citizen, is that many of the votes we take, there is a strong consensus. It's either unanimous or close to unanimous. But for the really tough issues where it's a closer vote, it is not the situation that everyone comes in knowing exactly how they're going to vote. A lot of times, and just a very, very, very rough rule of thumb for me, is I assume a third of the people come in knowing that their, their, their minds are largely decided they're going to vote yes. A third of the people come in pretty much sure they're going to vote no. And then the third are truly undecided. So the whole point of the deliberation, there's actually two points. One is to influence that third who's truly undecided. They actually come to listen and figure they'll make the decision based on the arguments that they hear. But the other interesting thing that goes on is that the people who come in thinking they're going to vote yes and no, it is often the case that at least some portion of them are persuaded by what they hear and they change their mind. That is the essence of deliberation. And it is, so it's very, very different than just going and voting at the ballot box.
Yep, that makes sense. Hand in hand with that, people will say, you know, I don't see the need to spend several hours of my time sitting through a meeting like this. Things seem to be fine in town, nothing on the agenda that I care about. What would you say to somebody who might be having those kinds of thoughts?
Well, first of all, great, I'm sure. All, all the people who spend a lot of hours, such as yourself, volunteering for town government, glad to hear that you're happy.
Yep.
I know all the employees here at Town Hall, you know, they're happy to know, okay, you know, people are happy with our service and all. At the same time, I guess I would encourage everyone to show up at least some of the time so that you know what's going on, so that, you know, both to give yourself the chance to confirm or perhaps disconfirm your complacency that, that things are going, going well. You, you, you can always learn things. And I would say in particular for people who are new to town, one of the most important things about town meeting is you can influence City Hall. I grew up in Pennsylvania, it was like, you know, you can't fight City Hall. Well, in Carlisle, that is absolutely not the case. As a citizen, you can get nine other people's signatures and present a citizen's petition and it will get on the warrant. The select board must put it on the warrant. They have no discretion. If you have the signatures, it has to get on the warrant. You know, unless, unless you're asking for something that's totally illegal. So there are a few minor exceptions, but for the most part, the select board has no discretion. It's got to get on the warrant. So if there's something you really care about, you can get it on, on the warrant, you know, on your own initiative. The second thing is even if you haven't done it on your own initiative, inevitably, you know, unless you're just in and out of town, living here for two or three years, but if you've moved to town, you're raising your kids, you expect you're going to be here 15, 20, or maybe 40 or 50 years, there will at some point be some issue that you really, really care about, that you really want to see passed or you really want to see defeated. And I guess what I would say is, knowing that that is inevitably true, do you want your first exposure to town meeting to be that time when you really, really care about the issue? You're not going to have a good sense of what's actually going to go on at town meeting. How do I influence people? So it's kind of, you know, not only, you know, if you want to influence, you have to show up, but also you ought to know how things operate. And so I would advise, get to know what town meeting is like before there's anything actually critical. And then when the time comes, you don't have to show up at everyone if you don't want to. But when the time comes, you'll know how to operate, how the meeting operates. You'll know what is your best shot to influence your friends, neighbors, fellow citizens to vote the way you'd like them to vote.
Perfect. Looking ahead to next month, what do you think some of the hot issues will be this year?
It's, sometimes, some things are easy to predict, other things are not. You know, typically, you know, anything, anything having to do with the schools will, you know, devote, you get some amount of passion, even if, even if, you know, ultimately the vote is fairly lopsided. So as you very well know, you know, that we have the amenities building at the high school this year. I don't know if that will be controversial or not, but you know, there's, there's always that. You know, the, the budget, fortunately, over the last really 15 years, the budgeting process that we have here is really, really solid. The system works well and we tend not to have a whole lot of controversy, which I think is a testament to the quality and the sheer amount of work that, that both the staff and the volunteers on FinCom put it, put into it. But it's all, you know, that's always important. And then any bylaw changes having to do with land use. Um, and then, uh, any bylaw changes having to do with land use. Um, typically, you know, um, if there. I- if it's just a little bit of a housekeeping change, not so big a deal, but if it's fundamentally changing policy. Um, as we might have this year with the accessory, uh, uh, dwelling unit, um, bylaw. And then at the special town meeting that we'll have in the fall, so not this spring, but in the fall. Uh, the planning board is expecting to bring the M B T Communities Act, um, some zoning changes. And I'm sure that, you know, even if they do a, a great job and a lot of people support it, there will be controversy, that one is easy to predict.
No, fair enough, uh, as we wrap up, can you just remind everyone when town meeting is and how they could learn more?
Sure, so town meeting, Sunday, May eighteenth, so that's the weekend after Mother's Day. It will be at the school. Food truck is open for business at eleven thirty on the plaza, the meeting starts at one o'clock, oh, and I should mention. Um, that, uh, for seniors who may not find it as easy to get out. Um, or maybe on a smaller venue in the community room at Benfield Farms. Um, uh, we do have, we are able to operate a remote location there. Um, and so, so people can participate from there as well.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Oh, and, and the website, I forgot about the website, yes, you did ask me that, so we do want, um, i- if more information. Is available, you go to carlisle MA dot gov, that is the town website. And then you go to the town meeting, uh, webpage, if you look at the menu on the top, it says, uh, departments. And town meeting is listed, uh, under there.
Perfect, well, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
I will be there on Sunday, uh, May eighteenth and looking forward to another good town meeting.
Yeah, I hope we have a lot of fun.
Wonderful.
Okay, take care.